And the additional impervious you referenced is that the riprap? Okay.
Correct, that's the riprap. And just to expand upon what Mr. Elliott was saying, so the the maximum height of the wall will still be 12 feet, which is at that section on the northern part of the of the diagram, but that section that's out of the stream buffer will now be a little shorter because we're moving it up further. But the so the variance request for the height of the wall is still intact, given that it'll be 12 feet over on that side.
Yeah, because although it's 12 feet, you don't actually see the 12 feet most of it, right? A lot of it is in there.
Yeah, so part of the wall will be under the ground. The only part you'll see that's 12 feet high is the one piece that she was just alluding to kind of over in that back left corner. And then the rest of it kind of works its way up the hill, so it is not quite as tall on the sides and across the back over on the other side.
Okay, thank you.
So Mr. Elliott, one last question. Sorry, I wasn't here last meeting. So the purpose of the retaining wall is to backfill and put a to to level out the backyard, is that correct?
That is correct, and it addresses some issues that he's currently having with some other retaining walls that are failing.
Right, I read that in the report about so we had one and one neighbor did some of the neighborhood negative comments had to do with the height of the wall, what they were going to see from the back. So if they were looking from the 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 adjacent property behind, they'll see a 12 foot wall at the most and maybe down to lowest, maybe 10 feet. They'll see a wall, but the from the owner's perspective, they'll see land. But they won't see land and then 12 a 12 foot wall. Is that is that?
That's correct. So from the owner's perspective, they're going to see land or property and then a fence because we have to put some type of railing fence.
Right, right, right.
Top of the wall. The only neighbor that would see any part of the wall is directly behind him.
Right.
Who I think was originally in opposition, but after speaking with them, it's no longer in opposition of that.
Okay.
And the wall, you know, there's probably a 20 foot section of it that'll be at 12 feet, 11, 12 feet high. The rest of it is going to be, you know, kind of slope up on the sides where we now moved it up. It's probably six or seven feet tall.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I think it's a good compromise.
The trees lose their leaves and we'll plant evergreens in front of the wall. And, you know, I want to be a great neighbor. I don't want them to to I don't want to destroy their view of this beautiful land. So yeah, we're all in favor.
Just don't plant in the stream buffer unless you get approved.
We've talked to like exactly so.
For the record.
And that was that was one of the things like when I was talking, when we planned the riprap. Like, so we talked to the Georgia Soil and Water Conservation Commission, and they don't view for rap is impervious because kind of like a deck, if the water can seep between the rocks. So we didn't realize we were playing. We were planning something that was impervious. You know, I would have I prefer the bush and the shrub and the native vegetation approach. I didn't know that was going to address what we wanted to. So that's why we chose.
Okay, can I can I move, Joe?
You may. That's yeah, I'd just like to thank the applicant and the and the city for going back to the drawing board a little bit here and working together. That was commend you on that.
Good. So I moved to approve the request for one special exception from chapter 27, section 269 to allow retaining more height up to 12 feet. And for one variance from chapter 27, section 269 to allow a retaining wall to encroach into the side setback with the following conditions. First, the construction of the retaining wall must be in substantial compliance with the submitted site plan with edits from staff, see appendix A. The approval of the site plan does not constitute approval of encroachment into the stream buffer for the retaining wall. The sole exception is that land disturbance necessary for installing the retaining wall and up to three feet of riprap or similar installations are permitted to encroach into the 75 foot stream buffer. Prior to construction, both the 75 foot stream buffer and the bottom of the retaining wall shall be staked in the field and subject to the approval of the community development director. And in our standard one, if construction has not commenced within two years of the granting of this variance, approval shall be void.
This is appendix A, so it's the mitigation plan that we received and in staff has added in that black line signifying the retaining wall and showing that it will be kept outside of the stream buffer. I'm available for any questions and I can review any other aspects of the case. I have all the slides from the last meeting here.
Great, thank you. Board, any quick questions, initial questions, follow up questions from last month? No? Are the applicant care to approach the the board again and discuss the changes briefly and?
Hi, I'm I'm the contractor, Brian Elliott, working with Brett on getting the wall approved. So a little bit of back and forth with the city about where to put the wall. We're okay moving it up on that one side to keep it out of the stream buffer as long as we can encroach to actually build the wall and then put the three feet of riprap around the backside of it. So unless you guys have questions for me, I think we're kind of on the same page at this point.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor of the revised variance? Anyone to speak in opposition? Okay, we'll close it for board discussion.
I do have one question. I'm sorry. Um, I I don't know if Mr. Elliott, if you want to answer or staff. Does the wall moving it up so that it is outside of the stream buffer, does that change the height of it? No, okay, just wanted to clarify. Thanks.
And the additional impervious you referenced, is that the riprap? Okay.
Correct, that's the riprap. And just to expand upon what Mr. Elliott was saying, so the the maximum height of the wall will still be 12 feet, which is at that section on the northern part of the of the diagram, but that section that's out of the stream buffer will now be a little shorter because we're moving it up further. But the so the variance request for the height of the wall is still intact, given that it'll be 12 feet over on that side.
Yeah, because although it's 12 feet, you don't actually see the 12 feet most of it, right? A lot of it is in there. Yeah.
Yeah, so part of the wall will be under the ground. The only part you'll see that's 12 feet high is the one piece that she was just alluding to kind of over in that back left corner. And then the rest of it kind of works its way up the hill, so it is not quite as tall on the sides and across the back over on the other side.
Okay, thank you.
So Mr. Elliott, one last question. Sorry, I wasn't here last meeting. So the purpose of the retaining wall is to backfill and put a to to level out the backyard, is that correct?
That is correct, and it addresses some issues that he's currently having with some other retaining walls that are failing.
Right, I read that in the report about so we had one and one neighbor did some of the neighborhood negative comments had to do with the height of the wall, what they were going to see from the back. So if they were looking from the 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 adjacent property behind, they'll see a 12 foot wall at the most and maybe down to lowest, maybe 10 feet. They'll see a wall, but the from the owner's perspective, they'll see land. But they won't see land and then 12 a 12 foot wall. Is that is that?
That's correct. So from the owner's perspective, they're going to see land or property and then a fence because we have to put some type of railing fence.
Right, right, right.
Top of the wall. The only neighbor that would see any part of the wall is directly behind him.
Right.
Who I think was originally in opposition, but after speaking with them, it's no longer in opposition of that.
Okay.
And the wall, you know, there's probably a 20 foot section of it that'll be at 12 feet, 11, 12 feet high. The rest of it is going to be, you know, kind of slope up on the sides where we now moved it up. It's probably six or seven feet tall.
Okay, thank you.
No, I I mean, I think it's a good compromise.
Um, yeah, I talked to Michael who go behind us and I they wrote the letter to the to y'all. How they got the letter from the city and I want to make sure everyone got the letter first and then I went and talked to everyone and once I spoke to him and told him like, you know, we'll I'm still in favor of planning, you know, greenery like evergreens in front of also will block their view in the winter. During the summer, they won't see anything. It's it's very green back there, but in the winter it the trees lose their leaves and we'll plant evergreens in front of the wall. And, you know, I want to be a great neighbor. I don't want them to to I don't want to destroy their view of this beautiful land. So yeah, we're all in favor.
Just don't plant in the stream buffer unless you get approved.
We we've talked to like exactly so.
For the record.
And that was that was one of the things like when I was talking, when we planned the riprap. Like, so we talked to the Georgia Soil and Water Conservation Commission, and they don't view for rap is impervious because kind of like a deck, if the water can seep between the rocks. So we didn't realize we were playing. We were planning something that was impervious. You know, I I would have I prefer the bush and the shrub and the native vegetation approach. I didn't know that was going to address what we wanted to. So that's why we chose.
Okay, can I can I move, Joe?
You may. That's yeah, I'd just like to thank the applicant and the and the city for going back to the drawing board a little bit here and working together. That was commend you on that.
Good. So I moved to approve the request for one special exception from chapter 27, section 269 to allow retaining more height up to 12 feet. And for one variance from chapter 27, section 269 to allow a retaining wall to encroach into the side setback with the following conditions. First, the construction of the retaining wall must be in substantial compliance with the submitted site plan with edits from staff, see appendix A. The approval of this site plan does not constitute approval of encroachment into the stream buffer for the retaining wall. The sole exception is that land disturbance necessary for installing the retaining wall and up to three feet of riprap or similar installations are permitted to encroach into the 75 foot stream buffer. Number two, prior to construction, both the 75 foot stream buffer and the bottom of the retaining wall shall be stacked in the field and subject to the approval of the community development director. And three, if construction has not commenced within two years of the granting of this variance, approval shall be void.
Second.
First and a second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, it's approved.
Yeah.
New business ZBA 23 dash 06. Okay, let's proceed.
All right, so this one is that Denise Jacobs on behalf of the property owners at 5237 Tilly Mill Road, Dumity, Georgia, 30338. Request a variance from chapter 27, section 267 to allow a fence exceeding four feet in height in a street yard. So these are the existing conditions as shown in the survey. The lot is zoned R100 and is developed with a 9,975 square foot synagogue constructed in 1960 and expanded in 2020 with a 7,520 square foot one story building addition. A variance ZBA 12 dash 061 was granted to the property in 2012 to allow an increasing lot coverage and a reduction in parking. And a special land use permit SLEP 11 dash 121 was granted to the property in 2012 to allow an expansion of the existing place of worship. As part of a larger chain link fence project that will enclose the entire property, the applicant proposes to construct a six foot tall spearhead metal fence and two vehicular gates to the front of the synagogue. So that part will not be chain linked since that's not an accepted material for fences and street yards. It'll be spearhead metal. You can see that on the right. The project is for security purposes and they have obtained FEMA funding for this purpose. In residential zoning districts, fences located in street yards may not exceed four feet in height, which prompts the variance request. The site plan to the left shows the proposed fence in red and the two proposed security gates as yellow stars. The proposed fence design is shown to the right and we have received four letters in support. Those were included in the packet. A fence is a typical relatively minor improvement to a property in a residential zoning district. And this project, which proposes a fence height only two feet taller than what is allowed per code, appears to be the minimum necessary to accommodate the improvements to the property. For comparison, there is no maximum fence height for institutional uses outside the residential districts. The front yard fence height limitations intent is outside the residential districts. The front yard fence height limitations intent is really to regulate fences for single-family homes. The proposed project would not constitute a grant of special privilege inconsistent with the limitations upon other similarly situated properties. The Marcus Jewish Community Center is also located in the R one hundred zoning district and has a six-foot-tall fence and security gate in the street yard, so a very similar project. While places of worship are allowed in residential zoning districts with a special land use permit, they often have unique conditions compared to single-family homes. They face an increase in the number of people frequenting the property and have additional safety needs. The applicant has been awarded a nonprofit security grant from FEMA for the explicit purpose of strengthening safety at the property. Without accounting for the unique safety needs of the property, the strict application of the fence regulations could prevent reasonable use of the property as a place of worship, which staff considers a practical difficulty. Overall, staff finds that the project would actually enhance public health, safety and welfare by providing additional security for the property and that the request meets the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance. Based on these reasons, staff recommends approval of the request, subject to the conditions shown on the screen here. Um the first two are standard conditions, conditioning them to the submitted site plan and um you know, giving a time limit with which to do construction. The third one, the security gate shall open inwards towards the property only and the distance between the back of the sidewalk on Tilly Mill Road and the security gates are to accommodate any emergency vehicles that might need to be there um to prevent cars from having to be backed out into the road while they're waiting for the gates to open. Um so we're recommending approval and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Would the applicant care to address the board? State the case if necessary, you don't need to, but. Okay, great. Procedurally, I have to ask if there's any others in uh in favor of this uh application? Or any opposed? We have an opposition in the back. If you come and state your name and address to podium, please.
Sorry, I didn't get a chance to write a letter. So my name is David Linner. I live on twenty-two twenty-one Darfur Drive. If you pull up the property map, it's in the back corner. So on that property, I purchased it in January twenty-one. Everything is cleared out. So a chain link fence is already back there and it's about six feet tall. Putting another chain link fence is not gonna solve the problem I have of lights and cars and everything glaring into my, the back of my house. My neighbor is up there on the one over on the side, he has the same issue. So I would like to see if there is a way you could either put a wood fence back there, add some trees, bushes, shrubbery, something. Because in the winter, it's just literally bites as the cars pulling in, just shining all into my bedroom. It's my only request.
Okay, thank you. That's not it's not really relevant to the application. You guys can take that offline if you want. Yeah, thank you, thank you. Board, any internal questions, discussion?
Uh I wanted to make a comment that I appreciate the the fence you chose for the front is very similar, if not identical, to what is at the JCC. I think that's gonna look very consistent. Thank you.
I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve ZBA twenty-three dash zero six um for the variance from chapter twenty-seven, section two sixty-seven to allow a fence exceeding four feet in height in a street yard, subject to conditions presented by staff. One, construction of the fence and security gates must be in substantial compliance with the submitted site plan, see Appendix A. Two, if construction has not commenced within two years of the granting of this variance, approval shall be void. Three, the security gate shall open inwards towards the property only. And finally, four, there must be at least twenty feet of distance between the back of the sidewalk on Tilly Mill Road and the security gates.
Do you have a second? Thank you.
First and a second to approve the application, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed? Pass, congratulations. Next case, ZBA twenty-three dash zero nine.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see you guys again.
See you.
Here in a while.
Yeah, you haven't.
So this evening, the case uh I have on the agenda is ZBA twenty-three dash oh nine for forty-five thirty-seven Shambly Dunwoody Road. The applicant requests a variance from section twenty-seven dash two oh two to increase the maximum parking to allow up to forty-four spaces. So if you're not familiar, this is a drive-through restaurant that's at the corner of Dunwoody Park and Shambly Dunwoody Road. And it's currently, this area is undergoing a really major streetscape project, so there's a lot of construction out there. And what they're proposing to do is build a new restaurant um with a uh in a different location, uh same restaurant, different location, reconfigured drive-through and reconfigured parking lot uh with a maximum of, this plan is showing forty-one spaces because they've made some changes um to the, to the site plan. So currently, the proposals for forty-one spaces, um previously, there were forty-six parking spaces on the property. So just a little bit of background, the Georgetown area. Um there's been a uh the Georgetown Master Plan, which established a a vision for this area that was more walkable, more bikeable um and more transit oriented. And this is just the the master plan document showing uh the different types of uh streetscapes uh envisioned for this area. And specifically at this corner um is the multi-use trail that's currently under construction. And and this is just for reference, what that streetscape is supposed to look like. You know, the point of all this is to really state that the city's making investments in this area. Um and any development and redevelopment in this area, we would like to be sort of in line with the goals for the Georgetown area as much as possible. And one of those site design standards that's really specified in the code and and one that we've implemented citywide, in fact, is our parking maximum. So it was a really important move for the city to transition not only Georgetown, but also the perimeter center and the Dunwoody Village into areas that are more pedestrian-friendly and friendly to alternative modes of transportation like bikes and transit. So in regards to our review and approval criteria, so in twenty nineteen, we adopted the parking maximums as part of a transition towards a more urban and pedestrian-friendly environment. And this is encouraging sustainable development and promoting more active transportation. Um when we talk about sustainable development, surface parking lots uh are a lot of hard surface and that causes water runoff and radiated heat effects um making areas hotter. And so reducing those surface lots, encouraging things like parking decks and things like that, uh allow us to aim for more green space and also aim for uh more safe environments for pedestrians. We also do have several uh drive-through restaurants in Dunwoody that are existing right now that operate uh within our current standards of under ten or under spaces per thousand square feet of gross floor area. So we don't feel that this would be uh an issue and we feel that it might, I, you know, it would grant them special privileges. Especially considering that every single property, every commercial property in Dunwoody that redevelops has been uh developed with these parking maximums recently. Um you know, right up the road, we have the new shopping center uh here on Ashford Dunwoody, that's developed according to our parking maximum standards and those were enforced. Um so we feel that that would be granting a special privilege. Um and additionally, it's not aligned with our planning objectives for Georgetown area and Dunwoody in general. Um and it undermines the capital investments in the Georgetown area specifically as it relates to things like the new multi-use trail there. Um and then overall, when we talk about a hardship, um you know, that's something that's really impacting the reasonable use of a property and we don't feel that denying this variance would deny them reasonable use of the property. Um it can certainly be developed and be operable within our standard parking maximums. So overall, we are recommending, excuse me, quick note about the public comment. We've received seven public comments in opposition. At the time the agenda was posted, there were six, and then I recently received another letter and I just provided you all with a copy of that um up there on the dais, if you want to take a look at that. But overall, there's seven public comments in opposition. Um and the comments cite concerns over the amount of parking and hard surface, lack of green area and impacts to walkability. Uh we received no other comments. So based on uh our analysis of the approval criteria, we don't feel that it meets any of the approval criteria. And as a result, we're recommending denial to the request. And if you have any questions, I'm available. Thank you all.
Thank you. Any initial questions for staff?
I did.
Yeah.
Ma- I'm sorry, Madeline had a question. Could you confirm the number of existing spots now, is it? Or I'm sorry, not now, that they're requesting, is it forty-one or forty-six?
It's currently forty-one, because they've changed, they uh chain messed with the the size of the building and the configuration of the parking lot. So it's forty-one spaces currently proposed on their site plan.
Okay.
And and what's the square footage you use to compute the twenty-eight? For their maximum?
So they adjusted the size of their building. Um so based on that current size, I believe it's three thousand one hundred and nine square feet. I'll have to
Yeah.
Let me pull up the site plan. Um, okay, that's really tiny. I'm pretty sure it's thirty-one oh nine. And so you take that, you divide it by
Yeah.
A thousand and multiply it by ten, so.
Right, so it's, but it's thirty-one.
Because they've adjusted the size of the building slightly, it's uh thirty-one is allowed and they're proposing forty-one.
But the proposal says that Matt, the, the it says in the document that's on the because the building got bigger.
Correct.
Okay, so what we're looking at on the agenda versus what you have on the possible outcomes, we've upped it to thirty-one is what the si- the maximum in, based on code right now.
Correct.
Based on the building that they are putting before us.
Correct.
Thank you for confirming.
And and the forty-six and the forty-one were confusing as well.
Right.
There was some definitely.
So it's thirty-one and they're asking, it's currently approved for thirty-one and they're asking for forty-one. That's the numbers we should be looking at, not the, not this twenty-eight, forty-four in our.
A previous iteration asked for twenty-eight and
Correct.
From twenty-eight to forty-four, now they're asking for thirty-one to forty-one.
And you agree that thirty-one is the correct calculation based on the size of the building?
Correct.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
And the current number?
The current number, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was trying to see the twenty-eight to forty-four.
Yeah.
And twenty, yeah.
Thank you. Advocate, would you uh care to address the board?
Yeah, it's we can't, I know. You can see it, it's gonna come through.
They should be in the presentation as well.
Alright, good evening. My name is Wayland Hoag Integrity Engineering. I'm the civil engineer on the project for Burger King. Um wanted to clarify a few things from staff. Uh obviously, this project has been around for quite a while. We came before you guys for variance about two years ago. Um some of the stall of this is because Burger King has been developing a new prototype building. Uh and this will be the first in the country to have this particular building. Uh what it's done is it's actually reduced the footprint size. Um and that's why you're seeing us at thirty-one hundred square feet compared to a normal QSR McDonald's Chick-fil-A is in the forty-five hundred to five thousand square foot range. Um so that's a little bit of the stall. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the site plan and what we've, what we're proposing. This is Brian Arnold, he's the director of development. He's gonna talk about the building and what we're proposing for this redevelopment. And you guys, you guys have a screen? Can you see the uh? Yeah, yeah, they're gonna, they're they're up there as well.
Sorry.
So as you can see, th- this is the look of the building. Um it does have a front pickup window in the front of the building that you actually a walk-up window. Um the second, let me see if I can get to the second. Um here we go, sorry, the mouse here is a little touchy. This is actually a look from the drop-through windows, actually looking from the side of the building to give you a look. Um it kind of fits within a lot of the development that's in the area. If you go and look at the shopping center, uh the Publix that was across the street um with some of the same materials and that sort of thing. So wanted to get into the site. We are proposing to completely demolish the existing building, the existing parking lot and rebuild all new. Um this, in order for us to do this, we've really looked at the number of parking spaces that's needed for a quick serve restaurant. There's a couple of other factors other than just staff and employees. A lot of our customers are landscapers with trailers, FedEx, UPS trucks, a larger, a lot of bigger vehicles that you see, some of the blue collar work that is coming there for lunch and actually is a dining customer. When this happens, they take up four to five spaces at a time. Um there's not any way to really prevent that. We actually encourage it. It is our customer clientele. That's who we serve. That's who we serve in the community. So with this, we felt that forty-one spaces uh with this new building prototype, we could have a maximum of a twenty park, twenty employees. And so this plan in front of you, if we had twenty employees and we had twenty employees driving vehicles, the vehicles that you see in ref, in red would be our employees. The blue cars would be our customer employee parking. And then we've, we've demonstrated maybe one landscape trailer in here. So what this really does is it, it takes our numbers really down to what we can serve as our, as our as our customer. Um and that's if we only have one landscape trailer on site. I don't know if you've been to, I mean, I'm sure you have, but you see at lunchtime during peak lunch hours, we might have two or three on site at a time. The other thing is we have Uber Eats and we have cars that are constantly now delivering food. So the green cars in front was what we see is what would be required for Uber Eats customers, our deliveries and any of the customers picking up and delivering food. So that is another space that is occupied short term, but is it a quick turnover there? The second plan that I'm gonna show you is if these, if the ten extra spaces were eliminated, what it would look like. It actually removes the spaces along the rear which is the least seen from the road, and I'm gonna flip back and forth because it's kind of easier seen. And then the spaces along the, the uh drive-through side, which is the northern side here, right where the cursor is. So if I flip back and forth, you can see this is the exact same plan, other than the parking spaces along the back, along the dumpster and where the blue cars uh along the top of the page are eliminated. So this is where those spaces that we're looking at is adding. When I show you the one with thirty-one spaces, if we move the the customer with a trailer that comes in, I've demonstrated that on the side, it even reduces the number of spaces that are gonna be there. We're not asking for these calculations to be based on a, a square footage, because we've done a good job to reduce the carbon footprint and the size of our building, to reduce the size of the building. But we still need the parking. If we added a thousand square feet to this building, we wouldn't need a variance. We would be right in line with our competitors or even our previous prototype building. Our customer base is still the same, so that hasn't changed, but we found a way to reduce the building. And as you see in the back right corner, that's where the reduce is. Instead of this building being boxed out into a total rectangle, it's actually smaller, reduce that footprint. And then it's actually increased the amount of green space. I know there's been a lot of talk about impervious and green space for this project. This parcel is one point two nine six acres. It's a really large parcel for a quick serve restaurant. We're actually providing thirty-eight percent green space on site. If you look along Shambly Dunwoody, along the sides, the landscape strips are enormous. And that's mainly because the site is really, really large and we have the ability to use that. The requirement by the municipality by Dunwoody is twenty percent. So we're eighteen percent more green space on site than now it's required. We are, we do have an existing detention pond in the rear. We're gonna actually redevelop that. The pond will still be there. It will provide detention for the impervious runoff. We're actually reducing the number of spaces to that what's there today is forty-six spaces. We're going to forty-one spaces, reducing it by five. So all of these concerns of the additional impervious, the runoff, I, I don't understand the concern because of the amount of green space that we're, we're providing eighteen percent more than actually what's required. I'm, I'm gonna let um Mr. Arnold talk about the building and a little bit of the operations of this. Thank you.
Thanks for hearing us tonight. Appreciate your time. Uh my name is Brian Arnold. I'm with uh GPS Hospitality. Uh we're a locally owned uh franchisee. And uh and so uh we're not uh a, the corporate entity, we're not Burger King, we're a franchisee. But we've partnered with Burger King on this building, as you can see. Um technically, I'm not really supposed to show this building to anyone, so you're getting a little bit of a sneak preview on it. Um, so I, I'm sure these documents are online someplace, so I guess I'll get in trouble for it. Um so I just want to talk a little bit about the building. Uh this is gonna be a one-off building. Uh you may see elements of this in future iterations of Burger King. Uh, you may see elements of this in future iterations of Burger Kings nationally. Uh, but this is a one-off like Fulbright, Crown Jewel. Uh, I know I'm getting into the Burger King kind of vernacular, but. Uh, they, they do, uh, they do want to do this for the convention. Uh, they want to showcase it. It's going to get a lot of press nationally. It's going to be highlighted. So I do think it's a good thing for the city of Dunwoody. Uh, and as a, as a um, a local resident, I think it's a, you know, it's going to be a nice uh entry into the city. Um, and so I hope uh that's taken into consideration. Again, you know, just kind of talking about some of the comments. Um, you know, hey, we've got forty-six spaces uh existing right now. We've got a huge parcel. And really what we're trying to do is minimize uh the building footprint. And so we're kind of being penalized for doing that. Because the calculation is based off of that. Um, so we're at forty-six currently. City code is thirty-one. We're asking for forty-one. We're not even asking to go back full bright with what we have. And so when you, when you add, you know, just uh our employees. On, onsite, which, you know, I know the, the, the red count color cars there, you're looking at that and going, how could that be possible? It really is at peak periods and being one-off. Uh, you know, this is going to have a lot of support from a corporate level. It's also going to have a lot of support from a national level. So I think you're going to see a lot more traffic here, especially as it gets publicity. Um, so uh, you know, this is really a need based on what we need for uh supporting sales and our employees. And um, you know, just our, our base, you know, we have a, uh, if you've been by there, you know that at any one day. We've got FedEx, UPS, we've got landscapers that work in the community. It seems like everyone meets there for lunch, which is great. We love it. But we really need to be able to accommodate them. And so um, I, I think if, if we, if we're not, if we don't get this variance and it wa- if it wasn't approved. I think you're going to get circulation on site from people that can't get parks. And I know you want to make it walkable, but it is again, also you get people coming off from the interstate. So you're going to get circulation on traffic and then you're going to get congestion at curb cuts, which I think just leads to an unsafe condition. Um, and so uh, I know that there were some comments uh from uh neighbors and uh residents of Dunwoody. But I think if you, their concerns probably were uh based in not having all of the, the dat- the, the data and the facts. And so if we're, if the minimum permeability is twenty percent and we're thirty-eight percent, uh, easy math. We're, you know, we're doubling, we're, you know, two hundred uh of what is required. And so um, I think again, it just boils down to the fact that we have a big lot in a small building. We're kind of being penalized for that. Um. Uh, let's see here. Um, in regards to uh comparing us to other uh drive-through restaurants locally. Um, most of the uh other restaurants here in town have uh adjacent parking fields. That they generally get to use and have the advantage of, of, of the overflow traffic. We don't have that. Um, I think uh, you know, Chipotle has a CVS overflow, McDonald's on Ashford, Dunwoody. Um, they couldn't even accommodate more space. They have a very small uh parking lot, so they couldn't even have gone in for a variance. And, and I'm not sure they would have. Maybe they didn't know the process. Um, uh, maybe not, they didn't have the space. So uh McDonald's on uh Cotillion, uh, they're over the ratio. Um, they had the space. So at one point, you know, I think it's a, it's just um desirable for them uh to, to do so. Um, I think just when you look at the holistic picture of what we're presenting, we're making so many improvements. And we're really being penalized again for having such a small building. Uh, we hope that that's taken um into account. I do want to mention also that uh we are trying to work on this, the spirit of accessibility and walkability. The front window on the, on the front of the store on the very left drawing, that's not the side of the building. That's the front of the building. It is a walk-up window. Uh, we are putting in more sidewalks. We're putting in better ADA access uh and ramping. And so we are, I think, in the spirit of everything uh from a zoning perspective and a co-perspective. Where uh, we really are trying to fill those shoes and really trying to uh engage in that. Again, it just boils down to we're building a very small building here. Um. I think just, you know, hey, um, the final thing I'll say is, and I said this at the last variance meeting. Uh, Burger King owns this property. They're our landlord. It's going to remain a Burger King. And again, uh, you know, if we don't get a variance or get this figured out somehow. I mean, we're going to have to just probably paint the building and, and live with it the way it is. I know that's not what anyone wants. We don't want that. You don't want that. It's really. Um, but it is a very good store for us. And this would have been done several years ago, had Burger King not asked us to, you know, engage in this new prototype. So we thank you for your time, consideration, and I guess questions.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, we're out of time, so we have no more. People can speak in favor, but I'm sure there's probably some. Uh, and if there's any uh one here that wants to speak in opposition, we have the letters, but anyone who wants to speak uh. Here this evening, then they're allowed to do so. Please address the podium, your name and. Address, please.
Uh, hello, my name's Mark Doral and I live at seventeen thirty-four Chateau Drive, which is about a thirty-second drive to the Burger King. So very close. Uh, and the gentleman is right. I did not have a lot of data, so I learned a lot tonight. So this is very helpful. Um, the only question I really had is the current, I've lived in this house for about thirty years. I've been here a long time, been neighbor with the Burger King for a long time. I can smell the Burger King from my. Um, but the parking lot never seems, the current parking lot seems to be full to me. And so there's never like traffic backed up, people trying to get in because the lot's full. And so I came with just major questions in my head, it's like, why do they want to do this? And where are they going to put the space? So again, I learned a lot, but I don't know if they're expecting business to double or what it is. But the current parking lot just never seems like it's full. I drove by about two weeks ago and took some pictures. It was probably Saturday morning around eleven o'clock. There were two cars in the parking lot. They were probably employees. And so again, I just came with a lot of questions. Why? This was very confusing to me. Why would they do this? So I didn't know they were planning to build a new. Facility, but so that's all. So I don't really know if it's opposition or not, just kind of questions and uh just why, you know. And, and just based on my observations of thirty years of being a neighbor, it just seemed like the current lot is never full. I'm not there with a piece of paper counting cars and doing, so maybe there's some lunch periods where it's kind of full and hectic. You know, I'm not taking notes about it. So anyway, that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Sure, you can address.
Yes, I'm not sure. I think he kind of answered all of his own questions, except for, I will explain that um, uh, there is uh peak periods. I think Saturday morning is probably arguably like our slowest time uh other than Sunday morning and Sunday night. Uh, but this is really designed for uh lunch hours um uh during the week. And that's when our, we're our most busiest at the store. And we do think that what, that this being like highlighted nationally, it's going to get a lot of traffic. And so we're trying to accommodate and make sure that it has the proper flow. And uh, we're not pushing parking. And uh, and the parking needs out into the streets. We're just trying to make them safer.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay.
Sure. Any food cards?
My name is Stephen Parrish. I live at uh forty-three thirty-three Dunwoody Park. It's the terraces of Dunwoody condominiums. Right behind the Burger King. Want to thank these gentlemen for the aromatic flame-broiled burgers that I get to smell quite often. It makes me hungry. Uh, but what I'm concerned about with this project is traffic. Like this gentleman. I lived for fifteen years where I'm living now. And I drive by this Burger King at, at least twice a, a day, every day. Now, it's referred to as a drive-through, drive-through restaurant. And I can verify that because like him, this gentleman, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name. I've never seen the parking lot full. In fact, I rarely see the dining room with anybody in it. And I do see the trucks, the UPS trucks and all those other trucks. They seem to be able to comfortably park in the to- in the front corner of this lot without any problem whatsoever. Now, what really concerns me most about this is that uh Dunwoody Park goes into. It's our main, Dunwoody Park is my main egress and that of most of the apartments and everybody else behind the Burger King. Into Shandley Dunwoody Road. Recently, for whatever reason, due to the sidewalks, the new wonderful sidewalks that we're getting. I guess people be walking to the Burger King now instead of drive-through, but they've eliminated the only turning lane that we had. So now we've got one way out of there. You can turn right or you can wait and turn left for a very strong, long light. So now if we're going to have more traffic coming down through there, driving through the drive-through, we can't hardly get out of there now. Shandley Dunwoody Road is a two-lane road. There's no place to go. There are a couple of turning lanes, but nobody else is turning into any of these drive-throughs. Uh, for these other restaurants, they're either, they either go into the uh, the Kroger shopping center over there. Or they go down Savoy or Cotillion and going over there. But uh, if we increase drive-through traffic to this Burger King to any degree, then it's going to be hard for a lot of our people to get to work on time. So that's my only problem with this. Otherwise, I'm looking forward to the fresh burgers.
Thank you. Advocate.
Again, it, it just depends on when you're there and when you're going by. And again, uh, you know, I think the sales volume speaks for itself. I mean, we do, we do have quite a bit of traffic. Uh, there are peak periods. And again, with a new building, it's just, you know, it's going to be more, so. Yeah.
Thank you.
Can I say one more thing? I know that there are people here that uh came to speak and support. And so I apologize that we took their time.
That's all right. Thank you. Close public comment and uh board have a discussion.
So I got a couple of questions for. No, no, he just came up. Um, just want to clarify a couple of things. I'm trying to put this into perspective.
Sure.
Um, so you said that you could, you could make the building bigger. I, I read this, but give me, how, how big is this building going to be?
Uh, the, the building, I think, is uh, as proposed, I think it's like thirty-one, is that right? Three thousand sixteen hundred, just over three thousand.
How much bigger could you make it?
Uh, what, what we've got the ability to make it big enough to comply.
Yeah, so, so I'll tell you where, well, I'm trying to figure out how much. If you would have used all your space as opposed to more part, I'm trying to see the balance here. So that's why I'm asking the question.
Right, right. And so I would, I would suggest that we could build a big enough building to get what we're asking for. Uh, on this site, because we haven't used all the green space. And we could do, like, we could make less green space, more parking space. And it would be to the detriment of the city. So again, I think we could build a big enough building to make the parking spaces work. Or what we were asking for today, forty-one spaces. And, and I believe that would be four thousand one hundred square foot building, correct?
There we go.
And that.
And that's, that's what I was looking for.
And that is like pretty on par with what other restaurant brands are building.
Okay.
And we have the space to do it. And then we would meet all the other zoning requirements and codes. So again, we just don't want to do that. We don't feel that that's the right thing to do for impact and what you guys are looking for.
Okay, so let me just say.
Okay.
Um, so I have um, um, I mean, I saw we're going from thirty-one to forty-one.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And um, and, 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 and I heard all the um explanations with why you, you need more with the. The trailers and things like that. I've seen them. Um, but. You've also said that if you don't get the forty-one spaces, the chances are the building would not be built. Um, is there some restrictions with Burger King that if you don't get this much X space, that it's not worth making, building the new building?
Well, really, you know, contrary to public comment and the negative, uh, we do need those spaces uh at peak periods. So a lot of times like uh off peaks, you know, if it's not lunch or dinner or a snack period. The parking lot again is not going to be full. And so in the spirit of the code, the walkability and everything else that you want is going to be there. Uh, uh, let's call it um ten hours a day. There's going to be a couple of peak periods, you know. Two hours at lunch, two hours at dinner, you know, a snack period at night and a snack period in between mealtime. So for the better part of the day, it's not going to be crazy busy and it's not going to be, uh, you know, a huge traffic consideration. If that, did I answer you?
Okay, yeah, you're doing good. And the um, the last question is um, so we're at thirty-one, forty-one, right? So why doesn't thirty-six work? Or is feasible?
Well, it, well, really, when we do forty-one, we're anticipating that, that the trucks with trailers, the lawn crews. Are going to pull in and take uh four to six spaces at a time. So the, like in the, in the approve, what we're asking for approval on. That back section around the back drive-through, we anticipate that trucks with trailers and lawn equipment are going to pull in there. And take up that whole field of parking. So it's really a numbers game.
Yeah, and also that. Spacing spaces for actual customers.
Right.
And so, so you have, uh, you've got six back here. So you have someone pulling there, you have someone pulling here. Now you're down to really just, to your point, does thirty-six work? Yes, when, when the trailer out there during lunch for about two hours, we're going to need all that spaces. And then the, you know, just kind of back the, you know, a nice easy flow and.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, how, how many typical, like, on a typical day, how many employees do you have working at your restaurant?
So at, at this store, because it's new, we're probably going to have uh, uh, three or four leadership positions helping training. Uh, we're probably going to actually uh operational leadership positions. And then we're going to actually have a trainer there. Because it's a brand-new store, brand-new prototype. And then you're going to, you're probably going to have anywhere from uh fifteen to seventeen employees. During peak periods, peak periods. So when you go by right now, it's not going to be that many. But at lunchtime for a two to four hour period to prep for lunch and to support lunch and then clean up after lunch. We're going to need those spaces again. That's really a peak period scenario. So if you went by right now, you're going to go by a store that maybe has. Six parking spaces and maybe four employees, six uh parks, like a couple people dining in the, in the dining room. And then you're going to have four employees and just cars going through the drive-through. So it's, I know it just, you're loo- looking at it as. How are you ever going to fill that up? And how are you going to ever have that many employees in there? It's peak periods. And the support staff to help train uh the operational leadership that's going to be in the store, store manager.
Um, how long do you anticipate? Is that going to be a year for? Cause once you get trained on your new facility, then those become customer parking places. Then you're down to maybe twelve employees or.
This will be a training facility.
Oh, it will become Burger King's. I mean, Burger King will use it to train people that are going to have it.
This is going to get, I mean, I, this is going to get unbelievable press and um.
Okay, I understand now.
It's going to be a, it's not just a temporary.
Right.
For us, it's a permanent investment.
And my, have your, did you have something else? Or do you have any outdoor dining? And does that count towards your square footage? Do you see what I'm saying?
I don't know if that's part of the code or not, but work is part of the code, no. So no, there is space for it. Uh, there's space for it um uh right behind this area.
Yeah, I see it on your drawing. But it doesn't count towards this off, okay?
But it is, it is a patio area that we've considered putting exterior seating in.
Okay, thank you.
Talked a lot about impervious and, and, you know, obviously uh less than the requirement. Uh, how does it, the footprint itself is, how's that dramatically changing? I mean, just pure, we looked at that staff, pure impervious. I know that they're going well beyond.
Yeah, I can answer that. Calculations.
It's going to be comparable.
Our, our current uh pervious is. Tell you here. Current pervious is thirty-seven, proposed is thirty-eight, so we're a percent better than proposed. And allowable is twenty. So again.
That's what I thought.
We're nearly a hundred percent more than required, easy math.
Good, thank you.
Okay, my turn.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, uh, we were, there's, there's a lot of focus on the number of employees you're going to have at peak times. How many of your employees now drive to work?
Nearly all of them.
And so how many employees, what's the minimum number of employees you have at the store at any one time and the maximum you would have right now? During peak periods.
I mean, so we, we, it's a, it's a big. I mean, so we we, it's a, it's a big difference between store volume and high volume stores are gonna have. Uh more people. And so low volume, like at low times, the store at low times, it might have two employees. So two cars, two employee vehicles uh at peak periods. Which I think this store will probably have, we're gonna probably have twenty employees.
And twenty employees who drive.
Yeah, I think, I think when I say twenty employees, you're gonna have uh management. You're gonna have uh above store uh leadership and training in the store, and then you're going to have. Uh you know, you're gonna have some people that get dropped off, but in general terms, you know, uh at that high volume, we need twenty people. To constantly clean the parking lot, constantly clean tables, you know, it's, it's not just food making and window work. It's, there's a lot of. Propping and uh packaging and and um this customer service. So. It is a big number.
And and I had, I'm sorry, I had one more question. So I'm curious what discussions took place, um maybe with corporate Burger King, you as a franchisee. Knowing what the city of Dunwoody's master plan was and what limitations there might be on parking lot. Um restrictions, spaces versus, you know, per square footage, et cetera. What was the discussion about or or? That led to, let's put this flagship, state of the art, one of a kind Burger King model. In this community that is very pro land or pro green space. And walkability and has these parking restrictions.
Okay, so I think, you know, uh the permeability, we more than meet that. Uh we are building something that does have a good walk up presence to it, and so that's an improvement. We're decreasing the number of parks that we currently have. So that's an improvement. I think every, every category we've improved upon. Except for, we don't meet compliance to parking ratios because we're building a small building. And so. Uh the suggestion in the conversation with us between Burger King and myself was. You know, we went in for the variance. You're all were part of the variance with the curb cut. That was a very reasonable process, logic based. And so. I described it that way um to them. And uh and so this is also one of the last stores in Atlanta. That hasn't been remodeled and it's long overdue. And so uh. I think probably the consideration and the conversation is around, why hasn't it been done? And that's because, you know, it's. It's a, it's a difficult process. And so uh we're, we're trying to meet every criteria we can, and we hope that it's a reasonable outcome. Just like it was last time, where we've identified uh and prioritized what you want uh from a code perspective. I think on everything, we've more than met it. And knowing that we can come in and add more square footage and still be in compliance. And still have the number of parking spaces we need. Uh not ideal for anyone. I think we all want less of a footprint. And uh and be just more, you know, a reasonable, responsible citizen.
I I was gonna add um. Now what Ellen said, I mean, I think you had a nice presentation. I think it looks really cool. I just, I'm in that, I I've lived in Dunwoody a long time. I've never seen. I I'm on that street all the time. And with all due respect, I've never seen that restaurant crowded. And I think. If you make this a flagship store and you have all these cars, I mean, this, where the Bank of America is and going back to those condos. If if I live there, I'd be pretty upset about this project, to be quite frank with you. I I think to have all these cars here. Or allegedly all these vehicles here and all that, the 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 traffic is already terrible right there. At certain points of the day, I think personally, this is the wrong location for this store. I I mean, you put this in like. The perimeter parking lot where there's a lot of space. I think that's, that sounds more reasonable, but. I would, I'm I'm gonna, I I'll tell you right now, I'm 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 really against this. I think this is a terrible idea for Dunwoody and for this. Location. I think you have a great presentation. I love what you guys do. I think it looks really cool. And I'm not disputing the the concept of the walk up, but I think for where this is in Dunwoody, I think this is a really bad idea. Personally.
Well, I can address that and just say, I mean, it is a, it is a commercial parcel.
Right.
We're not really going anywhere. It is a good store for us. And again. I I don't think it's good for Dunwoody to leave it the way it is.
Right, but I think to increase the traffic with, I mean. Set, you know, seventeen car, seventeen employees. Um and to have that kind of footprint in that location where. In the morning, there's so much traffic, or in the afternoon, when people getting off two eighty five or getting on two eighty five. I I avoid this area all the time as much as I can. Just, just, just because of the traffic. Again, I I think, I really think that's a cool concept. I'd love to see that in Dunwoody, just not in this location.
Yeah, well.
Yeah.
Were there Burger King owns a property.
Yeah, that's.
So I got two more questions, quick questions. Uh so actually, and I went for the city. Okay, so we talked about Dunwoody. And so in a positive light, why why Dunwoody? Why that correlation Dunwoody, I should say?
Well, I mean, again, they own the property, Burger King Corporate owns the property and it's due.
Okay.
You know, it, don't, don't you think it's due?
No, 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 I was trying to get you, give me something to help you.
Yeah, I mean, and again, we're, we're improving every other code aspect of the site. So we're not uh coming in and asking for a variance on permeability. Uh we're, we're not coming in and asking for all these other variances to make it work. I think we're being very reasonable in the, in the ask. Um I do understand, hey, there is, there are peak times when it's a nightmare uh to, you know, travel that road. I've lived in Atlanta since nineteen ninety six, do business uh in this area. Uh I've been in a car accident on that road, so I understand where you're coming from. But I will also tell you that uh, you know, it's gonna be. It's gonna be, you know, just certain times a day, it's going to be high peak and it goes very quickly. And we, and the site plan takes that into consideration by keeping as much traffic on that site as we can. So it doesn't impact the roads. That is part of the consideration. Again, uh I would feel differently. You know, I've I've sat on the other side of the table. Uh I would feel differently uh. If we were asking for the world and not making improvements, uh and really trying to improve the building and the visibility and. You know, do something great for Dunwoody.
Yeah, but but the city, quick question. Um so um why do the stores or restaurants have um forty one parking in Dunwoody? Can you guys think of any? Who else might have this many parking spaces?
Well, the McDonald's, their neighboring McDonald's has more.
Okay.
Per square foot, right? So here's the way of.
Because, I mean, the the. The the challenges of the space.
And they're reducing, they're reducing the space of what they have now.
Right, right.
Right? So this thing about traffic is gonna get worse. No, it's not. You got, you're reducing the number of spots that they have. And forty one happens to be exactly the percentage that they currently are. So the the variance is for new standards, new builds. Right? It was new build. So you're gonna tell them that they gotta take forty six and go down to thirty one? I'd say that's hardship. So that's, that's the application of the variance. And it's, I, in this case, I think they're, you know, they're reducing the number of spaces, actually. Uh and the footprint. It looks like there's, and there's more uh green space than twenty percent more, whatever, than than just required for the project.
So the other McDonald's that's forty four, forty one.
Yes.
So what, somebody else, anybody else has more than that?
The other down says more than that.
I I.
Well, like she, they they mentioned that most of them have, are adjacent to larger parking lots. So where they might have built within code. I mean, think of Chick-fil-A. You're literally just parking by East Forty Eighth and walking. You know, forty, forty spots away to get to your Chick-fil-A. Um.
Are you adding tables? I didn't see it, like ta- outside seating and sorry.
We don't, we don't have outside seating. Uh we talked about that. There is a space for it if we wanted to add it for the future. Uh. We're doing a a total of uh sixty seats. And I think it's probably twenty four tables. So again, it's really not a ton of those tables and seats. We're really counting on. The walk up traffic and and the pickup and the drive through.
Can I ask another question about, well, I haven't asked the first one. I'm gonna ask a question about parking for. The landscape trucks that have the trailers. I've seen in some parking lots, the extended, almost like bus parking. I, without looking at it, I'm not an engineer, but is that possible at all to incorporate several of those long? Parking spots in the lot?
And and that's really what what these are. You're totally anticipating that although there's six parking spaces. Are totally anticipating that a truck and a trailer are gonna pull in there and take the whole thing out because they do it all. And we're not gonna call it a place. So you're not, you're parking at least. There are customers that may do that. So uh and it seems to me, having been there much. Uh that that is quite often the case, quite often the case where there's uh several uh delivery trucks.
But this, this spaces, so it looks like what would be happening in that situation is. Those spaces are designed for regular cars, but the trailers pull in and take up. But I'm talking about the, the. Right.
You can take this uh curb line along the outside edge and then, and then those take.
So there's, there's no way to incorporate those into the property without. Reducing the. Well, but without, without doing that, though. Okay.
I mean. I mean, for me, I mean, I look at it as, okay, I understand the city, right? But. Um a- and and the reason, the only reason I think I would not is maybe because I don't want, that's why I was asking the question. Maybe I don't want them to have a more special privileges a number wise than others. But realistically, when you're looking at this. I don't know. I don't think they're gonna have more traffic, whether or not they see it. I just, I think it's probably gonna be the same. Um the fact that the building's a little bit smaller, um and I had to ask the question. Uh kind of merits to me that they could have more spaces if they wanna have spaces, you know, if they're building a smaller basic. But I don't, I I I'm not a great in more provision, but I, like I said, I've been. My, my wife gets her hair done near that place. And I I don't see much, much traffic unless you guys are gonna make it this like the headquarters of the. Of the, of the training Burger King. I don't think it's gonna be.
Traffic is gonna get, you're gonna see a lot more traffic. I mean, it happens. I mean, that's why people do remodels and do rebuilds and. Uh that's why the curb appeal makes a difference. If you watch any HGTV show, curb appeal makes a difference and people are gonna come in that store. I don't, I don't wanna get into numbers.
It is dated.
But it is.
It is dated, cause I could see that because you guys are looking to do it. So I, I mean, it may penalize for making a smaller.
But if you had a smaller footprint building and you have this longer drive through, wouldn't people come in and say, you know, I'm just gonna drive through. I'm not gonna go inside. And if that's the case, why do you need? Uh it just, I don't know.
That that dr- second drive through gets open for about thirty minutes a day.
Okay.
And so it's, it's really like a nice to have, uh but it really doesn't stay open that long. And eventually, I think it'll be more of a um. An employee will walk out a door and hand uh like an Uber each person their delivery, so they're not stopping and and.
So, so there are two drive throughs?
Two drive through order stations, correct, in the back of the building.
Okay.
Like the Chick-fil-A.
So again, I mean, I think you made the point for me, uh you know. If we increase the size of the building, we could make, again, all the requirements of the zoning code and and not even be here today. We're just trying to do everything.
Okay, do we, do we have, is it set in stone that the building is gonna be the footprint that you're telling us now? Meaning tomorrow, you're not gonna go, okay, I got the spaces. I'm gonna make it four thousand as was the three thousand.
What we want.
If they did, they'd come back for more spots. They reduce, remember, they're reducing their number of, reduce the number of of parking spots that they have now. And increasing the permeability, yeah, so it's, it's actually an improvement. And the percentage is exactly the same we have now. We're not gaining, they're not asking for any more percentage per square foot than they have now. They're getting, they're making the smoke, yes.
All right, guys, make a decision or.
I can't make a motion.
I I would ask that we hold off on making a motion because I would like to have a little more board discussion. Okay, so. They're reducing the footprint of the building. Which means they, they get fewer parking spots. Their ma- they're almost twenty percent above the permeability that is required.
Almost a hundred percent.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
They're, they're twenty.
Almost double.
Double. Okay. I'm not sure they're gonna have as many cars parked there at peak times as we think, but that's my opinion. I don't have anything to back that up. And that's forecasting, that's not. So I'm just kind of trying to state the facts.
And they're reducing the total by five that they have now.
And and they're getting. Right, so they'll, they'll have fewer spots than they have. They'll have a smaller property, but they anticipate greater business. They're making an improvement. They do not share a parking lot with other businesses like many of these. Comps do on this list.
I mean, while we're talking about it and when you think, so. That's the thing. If they're all reducing the building, it's almost like they're penalized a little bit if you don't give them the spaces because of that. I mean, listen, the code doesn't allow, but I'm just thinking logically, that's what it is. Otherwise, I wouldn't even think about it.
Right.
Because that, that, that's how I started off, you guys. So I was going somewhere. Because if they're reducing it for me, they're making a sacrifice. And they're kind of losing, they're actually voluntarily saying, hey, listen, now I don't get as many parking spaces. But I'll probably need it because we're probably gonna get trailers. We gotta get people, our average, um. Not average, but our clientele includes the guy that's working at our houses and decides, hey, after I cut the grass or do whatever I do. I'm gonna stop by Burger King. Um and he probably has a bigger truck than I wanna drive, a bigger. So that's, that's, that's what it is to me. So I could decide.
Corporately.
Right.
You know, and so we will have more traffic than we're used to, than the, than the typical store has been in the past for the past thirty years.
And that's why I asked for Dunwoody. So that area will look a little bit better, well, with one more building, right? Um you know, I just hope you guys don't make me, well, I don't know what's gonna happen, but if it comes, that next thing you know, this becomes like.
We're not doing a bait and switch. No, we're, I mean, the building is the building right now.
Yeah, so I mean, I just, in in my mind, I, I'm, I'm thinking in the, in my mind, I just don't want everybody else to start going. You give them this much space for that one, you know, that, that's my only.
It's not as comparable to everyone else on the list. And to your point, they have parking fields and it's a, it's a standard that we could meet, but not. But also given to other folks because they have these others. So it's, it's just, it's hardship.
So, so then the other thing we're balancing this with is the master plan of the city. On whose zoning board we sit.
No, but talk about that. Go ahead. Go ahead.
So, well, you know, we are charged and I could pull out um what. Would meet the criteria um. Conditions unique to the subject property. Not generally applicable to other properties, not created by the owner or the applicant. I guess you could kind of argue that, but they're being penalized for doing something to improve it. Um however. I also wanna be very cognizant of the fact that we're trying to make this a more pedestrian friendly, not encourage traffic. But if Burger King's plan is to improve this store, I don't know how we can. Um deter traffic.
Unless you, yeah. It's, I mean, I just gonna stay there.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but traffic is probably not our.
No.
That's not.
But but trying to en- enhance the walkability and the, I mean, I feel like we're, it's kind of a double edged sword. Either you're, you're maintaining green space and improving or in maintaining the permeability that you have. Or you are. I forget, I'm lost myself.
I was just gonna, like, maybe I'm gonna finish your thought for you, but.
Please do, because I lost it.
Because, I mean, we're, we're going from forty six spaces down to a proposed forty one.
Yeah.
And so we are improving that walkability. And we're doing a walk up window. We're doing ramping. We're doing streetscaping.
But when, 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 when it comes. But when, 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 when it comes to the, to the master plan, I'm thinking. Dunwoody wants to kind of get the buildings closer to the sidewalk to improve walkability, right? What attracts me in, in, in their plan is that. The look of the building itself is more contemporary, and, and it's more refreshing. So it kind of invites people in a way to frequent it, I don't know how much, you know, whether I give them forty-one space, like. Or I give them thirty-six spaces or thirty-three, I don't know if that's gonna change the walkability of that for us. You know, but the building itself, and the way it looks, and the way it's shaped, and the way it looks, that seems to make people wanna go by and go, hey. You know, this is a nice little place, you know, I, I think, and they have a walk-up window, I think, right?
Yeah, right on the front.
I think alternatively, if you keep it, you know, with all the improvements we're making right there, if you say, hey, we're not gonna do this, they're gonna keep the building. It's kind of like an eyesore of all the new exciting stuff we're doing, you're just gonna leave that old looking building there. So alternatively, it's like, well, that really does add, may- maybe someone would walk up to the, you know.
Right, and, and truthfully, right, that, 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 the part is, uh, I, this probably wasn't after and I'm not supposed to see it, but this, I, when I saw it, I go, hmm, you know. I could have won that in my city, but, you know, um, but anyway, I, I'm kind of done, I'm not gonna tell you what it is. Somebody makes a motion and we'll figure it out, but me, I, I think I decided.
More internal discussions, questions? Have a motion or not?
All right, I move to approve the request for a variance from chapter twenty-seven, section two oh two, to allow an increase in maximum parking from thirty-one spaces to forty-one. Subject to the conditions um, on the plan that was submitted to the city as of today's date. Which is June first, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Of motion and a second to approve the. Uh, variance application, all those in favor? I, opposed?
I, I tell you what, I'm, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna approve.
Going for approve?
Yeah.
Okay, so four or one.
Yeah, four one, approved, thank you, thank you, appreciate your time.
We get, we, we get, we get invited to the beginning, no, don't answer that, next thing you know, there's some type of.
It's free, that's on recording.
Yeah.
That's on tape, I don't know, whatever. Uh, other business, none. Public comment, I think we had all that, board comment? The record, no?
Um. I fe- I feel like I need to comment that, um, man, sometimes these decisions are really difficult. And I have never sat and gone through each one of these zoning criteria as much as I just did, so.
Do a new job.
Thank you, staff, thank you, applicant.
Yes, there was. I did kind of blow through, I didn't want you to get up and talk to us. No, 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 I. Yes, public comment, yes, I blew right through that to board comment, yes. Thank you.
Sure. Uh, Bob Fassell, right now, I'm the current president of the Dunwoody Homeowners Association, and our job, as you know, is to preserve and. Improve the quality of life for all of our homeowners, and there's just no negative about this new building and what they're doing there. There, the impervious surface remains the same, it's all gonna be all new landscaping. They currently have forty-six spaces, they're gonna be down to forty-one, I know you mentioned about traffic, so do you not want businesses in Dunwoody to succeed? I mean, come on, really, uh, that's, uh.
My, right, that's why I approved it, I wanted.
Thank you, but when you're asking questions earlier, I'm like, you know, more traffic, uh, I hate more traffic, but. It's during the lunch hours and it's not during the, uh, for the most part, I don't think we're gonna see it during the hours in which shambly Dunwoody gets the, the most crowded in the. In the morning at a four-thirty in the afternoon, but, um, it's just, it's just gonna be good for the city and, uh, for the landscape and. And it, you know, I just think it, it was a, uh, a technical issue that they're decreasing the size of the building, making it more efficient, so. Appreciate your, uh, time on the board, thanks, guys.
Thanks, Bob. Any other public comment? Board already gave their comment, so with that, we are adjourned.
Next month. Was there like a question as to, no, as far as our agenda? We have something, that's something.
We are adjourned.